You'd be across Wilson Lake if you're going that fast, wouldn't you be? Like in a matter of...
It don't take long to go from Hellhead to Park.
I can't imagine.
My daydream girlfriend got in it the first day. She's driving the boat and she looked, "Well Sam, we can give a sex on the boat." "I'm gonna sex you in the house, I'll take the boat." Don't take that wrong ladies. There's an order minimum. Yep, they're actually better at it, they're just as good as men, not bad. They have better timing, better... They're all good.
Seems like from a dead stop.
You've got, you've got 125 feet back there on Holden Road. That's where the race is, former law between that 125 feet. You don't want to get there too soon, because red lights if you get there too late, your reaction time, your time going down the track. No matter how important you are to the track race, it's all about timing.
I like working, huh? Don't want to break the barrier. And it is qualified, you can break the barrier just to add time to it?
Well, they'll add it to it. You get green light in some, red light in some.
You ready Dawn?
Aye.
Okay, let's look for minutes.
I would like to add the date of the human trafficking session. So that's in there for people to see.
Yep, remember what day it was. Did she tell us eventually?
It was October 11th, I want to say.
I don't remember whether she gave us a date, she said one time.
She didn't give a time, but she gave a date, it was October 11th. She said she had the whole morning marched off, but it would be nice to put that in there just for reference.
You have it there.
October 11th. At the Finch Theater. I'm wondering Dawn, what you mean by under executive session you had, for the purpose of discussing the following subjects, potential liability and preserve liability?
That's what he said in his motion.
Oh, okay.
No motion to accept?
I've been approved.
That's corrected. All right, read it to you in second. You're moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. They have visited with the farmers up there about that road in Scott County. I said they have visited, there has been some discussion among the landowners up there. It's, they're not wanting to do anything. They'll have to go to court probably to do anything. There's some, several issues there.
Established roads.
I think the guys wanting to build a fence is the biggest problem.
So what does that mean for us, if he had it surveyed and he put his fence up? I mean, our road's on his property, so his fence could potentially go through a road.
I think they're established right where they're in those years. I think that is a problem.
You think what?
That would be a problem.
Where the road is?
Roads, right. When you buy land, it's more or less.
So you don't think that he would have, if he did put a fence in, you don't think he would have the right to put it through the road?
No. In fact, you could have that on every road in the county. You know, they were surveyed hundreds of years ago.
It would depend on what you use for survey. If you use GPS, it won't match up to the survey.
We've had other places, same, same stuff has come up. Maybe not that dramatic, but... We've had surveys done before, it matched up with the road.
Dawn, is this the same invoice that we received already for the inspection for the sprinkler system at Lincoln Park Manor?
No, are you asking about the one that you questioned when we paid bills?
From prior Automatic Fire Sprinklers Incorporated?
Yeah, those were the doors before.
If you're asking about the one that you questioned when you were playing?
Last week. Oh, we received one last, or we looked at one last week, is this the same one?
It's possible.
It was the same amount?
One's a statement and...
One's a bill?
Yeah. I, yeah, it's, it's possible.
So they have to have it done by two separate companies?
One was the doors, this is the sprinkler system.
One of the inspections, they can get a distraction somewhere.
No, this one's an inspection for sprinklers.
Yeah.
This one's an inspection for fire alarm system.
Yeah, the alarm.
Which I would say is two separate claims.
Right, but we got one of these last week for $350 on a sprinkler system.
It's possible, they may have sent it twice to us. When they scan that stuff and send it to me, I just print it, so it's possible that they had already sent it to me and then they sent it again with the statement. I don't really, I get those things handed out, I don't pay attention.
So from which account will this bill to Campbell and Johnson be charged?
The nursing home at present time, they'll run out of money I suppose.
Fund 44?
Go to the web fund. Secure some money. Bringing out the ditch where I took out the hedge road. Removed the light poles over on the other side of the road because of this hedge tree, it's like 30 years ago, 20 years ago. And that one they cut went off.
Poles?
Yeah, it stopped me.
I think I did tell them I didn't get it cut off, but they're broken, they're like, I think they're...
Sure, yeah. It's pretty solid. You don't have to dig out. I guess that was the only one they did, because I never found any others. We'd taken half that hedge road out. Three years ago. And never had any problem. I don't know whether this was one that was damaged and they were up there just fixing it and they just cut it off. I don't think it was one that we cut off, it's inside, outside the fence. My uncle cut one off at Barbour one time, Reagan Barbour.
It hasn't made the news yet. You might start telling these young guys, the draft is pretty close, coming back, it's in military news.
Well it is.
They're disgusting. You walk, breaking the draft.
Yeah, I bet.
We can't, there's not enough people, almost here, it's on. The Air Force is short 600 pilots, the Navy is short 800 pilots. They're tired. We're tired of fighting.
They kind of limit themselves though, don't they? Because don't you, don't they have stricter guidelines for entering where it used to be, like every trouble team? You go into the military and now they won't even extend them?
It used to be how to get out of trouble.
You can't have buny.
Yeah.
They don't want to mess their crops.
I think you have to have a high school diploma too now, don't you?
I'll bet you did. It's so hard, even pilots, they're pushing the payroll of 415,000 a year. You've got to sign that for six years, but you don't know how to do it, you don't have to pay taxes.
No, yeah. Send them overseas.
I never paid taxes, I was a relation overseas.
In fact, usually when they give those bonuses, they send them overseas before they give them to you. Well, it's kind of a troubled time to be going in, if you don't know what those...
Being a native pilot up there here, that, 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 I appear to look about like a... It's all in high water, you can't see our means. I mean, being dry water, what is that crap? It's got... Yeah, well, we got funny work, so they'll send us something. But you don't need dry water, you don't have to walk that way. It's not being distributed very fairly, right? I don't see a long time going to get this western highway one. Right, so it means you can hear that. It's about right. Just want rain. They got little different varieties now.
Yeah.
It's a lot a little better.
How many bugs, really?
134. It's a lot. I don't have broken ribs or concussions. They've adapted the cockpit from the S18, they have fast ones. They're aware of oxygen masks, they're trying to make it's oxygen, they got diapers. It's safe.
Where's AJ Welder at?
He's in, on the way to Slide Texas now. Oh, Mr. April, that's, oh, oh, you're probably one of these. It's now by Adam Texas.
Yep, we're at AJ. Got enough chairs?
All right. Morning.
Morning. Okay, that, where, I remember she spoke to me.
Well, I told Kay I would come with her and Jerry and Paul. The bus board's been looking into making some changes for their next fiscal year. Participation's down. They've tried numerous advertising and different things to try to lose participation. I think that things have just changed a little bit in terms of utilization and more people are still driving at an older age than used to where they have other transportation options. So they're, they have to submit by the end of October? Your budget for next year, is that right? November, in November, um, their budget for, because their fiscal year through the state runs different than ours. So they're thinking about maybe looking into maybe reducing some hours of transportation, yet staying within the guidelines of the grant. To be able to still get their, their funding through the state and whatnot, that they're considering potentially reducing some of the hours of service. And they thought it might be a good time to come in and visit and kind of update you guys on that. Anne Marie was out of town and Paul had something else today, so we can hang off.
So, how, what, reduction of, where, how many hours?
We have to run six hours, right?
Six hours a day?
Yes.
I guess, and does it have to be every day, or can we run longer on some days and not run shorter on the others, or? I mean, is it, is it 30 hours a week, I mean, I guess it's, is it 30 hours a week, or is it six hours every day? Every day? It's got to be that.
But you could probably run more, you're just getting rid of less. You can do more hours, you're just getting rid of less.
Correct, there are several lines that run all kinds of courses.
Yeah.
What are they, they started their north running. Are they making any requests for meeting them at the, any place?
I wondered that too, if you couldn't have a route that met them and drop them off?
I heard they're stopping in Minneapolis and I don't know, 24 Junction or Concordia, I don't know, where else. I had thought they had requested a yield to us a little.
How many runs, Slade, are we doing? Are we doing many of them at all? Most of them doctor's appointments?
Eighty percent of them are. I think, I don't know, I remember one day for just a couple weeks, it was, it was summer, it was gone, twice in one day. I think we're running about...
Yeah.
We're talking about, we're building a Slade around the eight. Really trying to understand that, because four or five years ago, they had it around Concordia or something. And across the country, nobody was frightened of it. Now they've extended it to the world. It doesn't make any sense for us to try to capture it.
Yeah, that was one of the problems, when that first came out, how we would benefit from hooking up to that, because basically being in Slade was the time to go to Minneapolis and maybe nearly one to eighteen.
What do you do? You're gonna make extra trip too, because you're gonna go down, drop somebody off, come back, and then go in the back of each bus.
And also for any extended hours, I think, to go out back in the head.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah, it is, yeah. If that lasts around three, like, action down.
I guess I don't have a, you know, problem with doing it long, but continue to get the funding. You know, you would be, you're out of something, like the schedule, you couldn't run extra hours, you know, except for the one you could.
We're just looking at ways in which to be a little bit more efficient and run a little better.
So the ones within the county are most of those during the midday, I mean, nine to three, most of those, in late ones usually?
Once you can run that for all time. Just throwing things out personally, if you're going, you're thinking of how to get a cut like this, uh... Very candid lady when I was driving.
A what problem?
Right, keeping the cane in the drive. Supposedly, for the hours a week, she'll be in check for a full time. But you're running a six hour, you're gonna pay the guy, you're taking off one. And nine, that's just a good five and a half, but one, five, which puts her under a full time, so it's like...
How long have you been the primary driver?
Nine years or so.
So 10 years. So basically what you're saying is, if the hours get cut, you're not interested in keeping the job?
Right, we're trying to solve that, right. Part of the problem I see is if anybody hates a horse and I didn't step on my butt all the long way to him. But on the other side of that, I regret to thank the surface. If we're wanting to continue to have surface circles, unfortunately, that's the way I am.
Are you the one that applies for the grant?
Yep.
And so how does that matching fund, I'm not familiar with how it works. We have to have a minimum of six hours a day, is what you're saying?
Right.
And then the county matches 30% and the state picks up the other, state federal 70%?
They should take care of business, I think, I'll take care of one. The county, 10% of the same, perhaps the whole shebang. All year, last year was, they cost the county... All year, last year was, it cost the county sixteen thousand.
So did we have rollover funds from the end of the year?
Rollover.
But we budgeted, about twenty thousand.
We spent twenty thousand. But their fiscal year is different than ours, so maybe?
Yes, their fiscal year was July through June, so it will be run from January to December. That's why they're submitting for next year in November because their fiscal year will. And any changes that they make won't go into effect until next July. So they have plenty of time to kind of get prepared for how they want to function differently and what changes they would want to make. But if they're going to consider reducing their hours, they would have to notify when they submit in November.
Okay. So when you say federal funds make up fifty percent, state funds twenty percent and county funds thirty percent, does that mean just based on the budget that you submit or do you have a maximum amount that you're told by these other entities that they will support fifty percent of X?
Right, you submit your budget on what you think is going to cost overall and may even approve it or cut it.
So right now, your total budget has been a what dollar amount?
I think last year it was around fifty-eight thousand. I think so. Well, uh, considering the revenue of two thousand, I guess you put that in, so it was around sixty thousand, yes. And it's not a program that pays for itself. And it wasn't set up that way either.
There's some other challenges involved with reducing, well, you've got the twenty-five mile requirement for each vehicle. To use it to ten acres only. Like the present situation we're operating on, I would say you'd be fortunate to get six miles a day for, uh, three.
I don't believe the board had that intention. My understanding, they just were thinking about offering a few less hours a day during the slower time that they're not transporting out anyways. And that they would still operate, you guys discussed, within the county and still, as needed, the out-of-town trips.
Say that again?
I believe that's what they were discussing on Monday. They would still function within the county and if they were still had the need to go to Ellsworth and Beloit and Slidell, they would still do that. They would basically be eliminating the hours that are slower. You were gonna identify the busiest hours and functions in those times.
Too bad you can't pick days of the week because then you could say, you know, we're offering one Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
We used to go to Slidell two days. Two set days.
Can you, can you determine that as a board, that we're only gonna do out-of-county trips on certain days?
They can. But they've always felt that operating a little bit more on demand was better for the clients that they, that they serve.
Because most of them are medical, wouldn't you say? I mean, it, it varies, but most of them are medical.
The out-of-towns. It's the Slidell ones, yes.
Those are the ones that you're kind of dictating anymore.
Well, I think some of their Slidell trips have been reduced because the hospital has worked on bringing specialists here to the community.
And more of our older residents drive than used to. Um, if you go by the high-rise, there's a enormous number of, a larger number of residents here that drive than did before. So transportation for them is a little easier and, you know, just things change.
Well, we're always looking for a reduction in funds, so I don't think you're gonna have a contest here. But, um, I know it's not a super significant amount.
Jerry on this, because he knows the workings of it, so you'll need his input.
You did your advertising campaign over the last several months, I think, right?
They always advertise, but like Jerry and Hannah made some new flyers saying around town and whatnot, hoping to boost.
But you hadn't necessarily picked up anyone new recently?
Kind of a couple people, I think. But, um, there's, the situation changes then. They've lost some, gained some, lost some, gained some.
And the senior center does provide free transportation to come to eat dinner there. But you have a few, don't you? No, no free ones, that's right.
Only at home.
That's right. And the clinic was going to work out something with this and we haven't heard anything there either.
Certainly, I don't have any objections for you, for you seeing the hours, if you think that's what needs to be done. I think we need to operate as efficiently as we can, you know. I think we need to continue to evaluate whether the service is something that is needed in this county.
Well, I think the board was of a consensus that it is something we don't want to have any.
So, you know, I think, you know, if we could work out where we can operate as, as much. I don't, I don't have any objections to saving money where you can. It is a service, you know, it's what government does, we provide services. Something more costly than.
Anywhere we can save.
Anywhere we can save, we can save. Thank you, Kay, for your work and the rest of the board members for your willingness to serve.
When you develop a plan, could you come back and tell us what the plan is gonna be?
When is your next meeting?
First Monday in October.
First Monday.
Second.
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 And they usually are meeting on your meeting?
Yeah, I couldn't remember which day of the month, which week, first week.
Sounds good?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, free time.
Morning, Dan. Morning, Dave.
Morning.
Is everybody comfortable, cool wires?
Yes.
Turn it down just a little bit? I hate to keep turning it down, but.
It's fine.
I think I've got a little bit of stuff that could possibly.
John Offlet is a member of the party?
Yes, he is. But he's also representing Prop Service.
Yeah, but you have one in the party.
And I asked Harry Haxman, the L.A.P.C. guy that's down the state, if, if that was permanent, and he said no, that's fine. But, yeah, I, I recognize that also.
This is what you plan on making out?
The, the top two sheets, or, I'm sorry, the top four sheets of what I came previously spoke to you folks about. And the, the top one is, the top two pages are the, the letter that, that I formulated. And then the next two are the L.A.P.C. appointees that we currently have within the county. And that, just that section of paperwork is just the, um, bylaws.
I, I don't think it would hurt to sample by.
And I was, I was going to ask you if you would like me to do that also.
If I don't know when, last time. I don't know when the last one, like.
They've, they've updated or changed. And they may have prior to me coming on board or when he was still sharing in between that transition from Rod and I. But, uh, again, the updated ones, I, I will attach and I'll get those from him also. She's the secretary.
Yeah, I think it'd be important for them to read through the bylaws.
Didn't read every line. Do you have a minimum amount of meetings in there per year?
One. Um, I just saw it earlier, it's one, just.
The bottom paragraph of nearby laws.
I don't like to ask that one. And four, I think, is what it was, so.
Section five is meetings, yeah.
Do we not have to have the schools anymore?
We don't have to. They're, they're invited to participate and give like.
That's not a requirement?
No, no. At our, at our October L.A.P.C. meeting, uh, will be on the agenda that, the training and exercise planning workshop. As far as exercises that I want to do within the next three years, excuse me. Uh, also will currently be, be getting discussed at that time. I've invited someone from the state to come, get more response from the participants. Because in the past, it's been ask for input and most of the people just sit there like a boba log. And the person, the representative of the state that, that deals with training, exercise planning workshops, has previously come out and spoke to a group of people that, that likewise sit like bobs on the lawn and got them to interact and participate in the design of exercises they'd like to see within the county for the next.
I remember, uh, last time I was on, when we did that, planned out three or four years, whatever it was, I don't remember. Can't remember the gentleman that was with the state at that time.
Dennis Colston was with the, right, right.
He was there.
Yeah, he's no longer with the state. He's moved to Nebraska, but, or Central Region now has a relatively new appointee. His name's Eric Stewart and he claims to be our next L.A.P.C. meeting also. So I guess I, I'm asking for your permission that I can send these out to all the participants listed on the sheet.
Yeah.
And along with the, the bylaws, the attachment as I have it in this form, I guess I have to send out to.
Yeah, some of these have a box, don't they, down there? Where you can just put them in, the mail, the mail drop down there, and I'll wait on it to mail them out to them. They will post them. You think Master Davis?
Yes, that's all I have for you.
What's been the state's response to these disasters? Do, are you up on it? Have we been called?
Nothing with the state, uh, I shouldn't say nothing because Task Force Five of the Task Force, um, High Water Research and Rescue, they got sent down to Texas, but we haven't heard anything from Florida yet. And, and like when Harvey was going on, after that initial inundation of water, we were getting updates periodically throughout the day from the state. Other than the task forces that went down there. There has been no other requests for any other assistance. And we're too early into Irma to, but I think that's playing out to be as bad as it's already been, so somebody's living right.
Several people have given credit to certain people directing those hurricanes.
I was watching a news update yesterday from, from the governor of Florida and, and he said he'd like to commend National Weather Service on the information that they were giving and putting forward with, with the diligence and the upkeep of that information. Again, they've got a mess, but again, Texas and Harvey is much worse on them. The emergency manager from Mitchell County, he responded as a Red Cross representative. We have a, we have a representative in the northeast part of the county that, that if there's a fire within the community and Red Cross gets called and they're asked for their assistance, this person don, or loads up X amount of money on a card and presents that to that family or that individual. And the emergency manager from Mitchell County had, had taken that course and was their representative in Mitchell County. So that's why he got contacted. He's been down there since, a week ago yesterday, and he will be down there through this time, so. And he's doing mass care, is what he's doing, and I've seen posts on Facebook where he's been out taking supplies out to people in boats and doing stuff also. Nobody, nobody from the state, as E.M.s, got asked to respond, so.
Are, are these meetings open, meetings?
Mm-hmm. Anybody, anybody can come, yes. And again, the secretary, she's been the secretary, excuse me, she's been the secretary since I've been the chairperson or since I've been on board or appointed because of the position. She's really good about sending out the information at least seven days, if not ten or two weeks ahead of the planned meeting day. And, and sends out the meeting agenda, the minutes from the last meeting. And things are pretty much covered there and asks for a response. And, and again, I understand people are busy, but most of the time the response doesn't get responded to. But there's a core group of people that usually Aljos there, Kate Gardner is representative from the hospital, Ladonna, myself, and then Sean Astral, are pretty good about being there, so we have enough for general. But it just happened this last July that harvest and stuff was going on, so.
Brains.
That happens. So again, with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and make that.
I have, I have no objection. You.
I have, yeah.
Everybody okay with it?
Okay. You guys keep that copy in.
Okay, you don't need to send me one.
Okay. Within the updated bylaws. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Yep.
All right. Yeah.
Ever get it mailed out?
Are you gonna stay in here?
Yeah, I'll stay.
Because that closet's supposed to not be open until you get older.
What?
No, they're just talking about it. Stance like what the six percent, what, what government is it for? I said, what government department is it for? What team is broke?
It'd be a lot broken.
They're a while back. They were out of money for the Secret Service, cause all the travel around the country's on us.
Does AJ work for a company or is he just?
What's your company, X Y?
Excellent, X Y. So when he goes, does he, do they work for more than forty hours a week when they go to these jobs?
Yeah, it's, we don't work six days a week.
Never.
Maybe twelve hours. The nice thing about that job, after eight, every day is overtime.
No, yeah.
They don't gotta get forty hours in a day. That's pretty good. They treat them pretty good.
So do you have a camper that moves with you?
Sometimes only there two weeks. So the company pays for the motels. He's talked about, he's got a camper. He's like, you take it there and we give it set up, you know, and clear down. And then he works from Texas to Oregon.
Yeah.
So kind of company truck.
Oh, they provide you a truck?
I told him, I says, you gotta keep that job. This is when the company, every road broke, they're struggling to use the gas.
Well. Well, hired. Did you get that shower yesterday morning?
I wasn't, I wasn't hoping, no. It doesn't look like it, doesn't look like it's vertical.
It's vertical enough that you can see a track yesterday morning when I left. And you can still see it when I came home last night. But it just, you know how it does, just enough to dampen the dirt a little and you can see a track. Somebody bit in my yard, I seen. I don't know what they was doing. They was shit. But I couldn't see they took anything. Whether it's Max or who.
I don't know, just hurricane's been a, it looked like a map that showed that maybe southern or southeast Missouri was gonna get. Yeah. That was just right on north side. But it's pretty hard for it to do that, but it's just gotta change its course on.
Yeah.
Usually where a hurricane more from the, over the main part of the Gulf would come up on the cross of the stage.
Yeah, that's when it, that's when it oftentimes gives rain. Morning.
Morning.
Got the dress done?
He's over Concordia.
Okay.
Well, I hope it works.
So now they're making cookies, huh?
Yeah. I'm afraid they won't be all made by the time I get home. I think y'all get volunteered.
Think you'll get volunteered to help. Well, you don't have too many more days.
Yeah.
You should've been out and seen the buildings gone.
Just driving down the half road. Yeah. Blacktop there, look over there, look the bear over there.
Yeah, sure does.
She about, tell me she about had a stroke. Tim called her. One building got up and then it fell off a trailer onto the other building and she about had a heart attack right there. What's she gonna do now? So I said, oh, I just get, no give me like that.
That, that worked pretty slick. Max and Little, they just, they just put those, well, he had his skid steer and Max had the tractor. Looked that sucker riding up. Max had a couple iron, long iron to put under.
Yeah. I didn't think it'd be that hard to get closed down.
Okay, Michael. That's a rose and green and blue dots, huh?
Yeah, there's a bunch of dots. When I sent in for pricing on these nine-one-one signs, I kind of figured what it would cost us to do just there on the highway. Then go ahead and do the whole estate area. And after I sent in and I zoomed in the map a little bit closer, there's a few of them that did not make that list. Way that those roads were put together, I missed a couple. Three locations. But if we did everything, and this is just on the signs themselves, the cost of them, not including any posts if we do, it's gonna be about six hundred and fifty dollars.
Six hundred and fifty.
That's thirty-two.
That's. Putting in thirty-two signs.
No, that addressing signs, thirty-two signs.
Yes, that doesn't include adding the other three locations. So kind of on average, looks like forty dollars per location. So we could add another hundred and twenty, so that'd be about seven hundred and seventy on just the signs.
Do we have any usable old posts?
We have wood posts.
That we already have in Detroit. So could you refresh what we're looking at? Because I was under the assumption the signs that we were approached about were on the highway.
They were.
So this is just if you were to go and re-sign this whole section properly?
If we go ahead and do the whole estates area. If we were to just do off the highway, it'd be about a hun, right at two hundred dollars.
Just that one?
Just those two locations off the highway.
I think the problem they have is when they get off of those.
The housing.
Yeah, cause they'd rather go all over out there. There's no sign.
They got on some of them wrong posts around there, but you don't, where they said you can't tell what way they're going.
They just can't.
Basically.
Look at that intersection and you'll find out how confusing it is. When you got Ridge Road that makes a corner and then you got two spurs with different names on it.
I think that's where the biggest problem comes in. Cause there's basically two entrances to these states, basically.
To me, it'd be common sense to, if you know you're responding there, which you know you are and you have time, co-biyol needs to be pulling up Google Maps or something like that. In addition, because it is confusing, even if we do put up signs, it will be, it will not solve the issues of having a hard time finding.
How did you mark this map? What program were you using?
Bing Maps.
Yeah, I mean, how did you mark the intersections?
Just drop pins within their map.
Okay.
If you zoom in close enough, did they give you the road names of those curvy roads?
Yeah, it should, like it did there.
So they could do that and keep them in the, in those, whatever. That would be a lot cheaper alternative than signing.
These aren't the same signs as what we have now, are they?
No.
Those green fiberglass?
These were aluminum signs. Green was black later, but.
I meant the ones that are up now.
No.
Okay. So you used the last of all of your sign budget for the Culvert project on Thirty?
Haven't used it yet, but I'm sure it will be.
Well, this looks like a good overview of a project. Can we plan it for the turn of the year so that it's into your next budgeting account for your sign fund?
Potentially, yeah.
Sounds like a good idea.
Once a person places new nine-one-one signs, everybody in the county's gonna want.
Well, if I might make a suggestion.
Bad idea, but I do know it's a very expensive endeavor and time consuming.
Do you think you have enough posts, though, wooden posts for this particular area?
Yeah.
And how many more would you have for any other?
Probably a few on hand.
Okay. Because my suggestion would be, I mean, you're looking at this as one area. I know I've had several calls about people turning off of eighteen, trying to find places if they're not from here, et cetera. So maybe you could do this same mapping project that you did for this area and do it maybe across eighteen and pick your other major throughways and see what that would do. Because you could have several of these projects pinned out for next year, just like that. And I think going from your main travel roads onto your cross-section would be priority.
Those are the ones that have already been marked.
They're always.
Shower's marking.
Some of them have been.
They'll go to the first groups.
They've all been marked to some point in time. Some of the signs have been shot. Some of them have just naturally broke through wind and.
But that fiberglass stuff that we have up now is not holding up worth of crap? I mean, they're all broken. So if you're, right now, if you're looking at this project with aluminum signs and you're doing X amount per sign and we have some of the posts, I know it takes manpower and a day or two of the labor, but you could potentially have a couple of these projects to do next year out of that particular sign fund. While we're on the topic of signs, I had a couple of things I went over with some people this weekend. And where they put in, who installed the signs that we got through that state funding?
Contractors Martin Outdoors.
Martin? Okay. So on Twenty, I believe it is, they marked a bridge. I'll turn it inside this, you can see it. They marked a bridge here with the caution, yellow and, yellow and black, right? But I've been getting phone calls because they're, they're right up, the sign that they put in, okay, is about, I don't know, maybe eight, nine feet tall at the top. And they're right up next to the guardrail on both sides. So if you came through there with a header on your combine, that's not gonna work. We're either gonna be looking at them being bent over or somebody just knocking them down so they can get through.
My intentions will be, once the project is done and KDOT and Federal Highway has approved and signed off on the project, we can go back in there and lower those back down to ground height.
Those paddles stand in there.
We have to.
See the regulation?
We have to follow now. To initially, on the project, that's what we have to follow. But based on low-volume roads and the N U T C D, we're able to go ahead and put them down at ground level.
But they won't do that?
No, not on the initial install. I tried everything in my power to get them to approve it.
Can we cut those posts off, lower the sign and keep the additional piece of the post? You can have another post to do another low one?
Yeah, if there's enough there.
I'm just worried about harvest and that's gonna be coming around the corner.
I'm not gonna guarantee that they're gonna be done. You know, they're only half done with the project and they've been here about a month and a half now. So, you know, it might be another month and a half. So I'll guarantee you we have some damaged signs. We've already had signs shot up, brand new and stuff like that too, so.
It's a, Pepper Bridge over there, over there is checking on it. Right after they finished the guardrail and signing on it, some of it is solid, sign off, post was sitting up there.
Was on a bridge, two bridge?
Yeah. Brand new.
Within two days of being installed, probably?
Uh huh.
I don't mean to that. I could come on with this. I had it keep on going. That's what everybody does.
Not everybody.
That's what a lot of people.
Wasn't on, so.
Okay, additionally.
That's their proper location. Cause it's marking an object and that's supposed to be right at the end of the object. So, you know, that's part of it.
Well, potentially you could coordinate a sign project where you know that you're gonna go around and do that as well.
Yeah, it's something that we intend to hopefully get done as soon as the budget gets all approved.
And that, at that same bridge, there's a guardrail sitting in the ditch.
Okay.
I don't know what that cross-section is. It's south of Union. Rye, maybe right near Rye.
South of Correctional Union?
Yes, it is, yeah, south of Correctional.
And that must be some more thunder in the road.
You can barely see it, but it's kind of grown over. But the guardrail is sitting down in the ditch there. And the other side's up, but that side's off.
Yeah, that's. We've got a quick tangent. We're trying to make it from these out there and fill up the transmission struggle instead of. Anywhere we can remove guardrails, we get those removed. Locations are usually safer without a guardrail than with it.
Well, do we want him to go ahead and order signs to do the highway part? I guess it'd be the first question.
Those two locations?
Those two locations.
Still waiting on a call back from KDOT. I have to break all in again to get a answer. But I'm pretty sure they'll let us do install to the.
I guess I would think probably that would be wise for us to do that much anyway.
Do those right away?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll put them on KDOT sign.
Yes. Just make a short piece of.
Who, who is Dawson?
KDOT.
Oh, so we just have to pay for the actual sign?
We'll kind of put the sign together and have it on stone. And they'll just bolt their stop sign, get longer bolt for. Tear stone. More than building was out last Friday. We had framing down. We department building suffered damage this summer. And overhead doors should be there today to install the door. So it should finally be wrapped up today. Last week, our Komatsu motor grader suffering some transmission ailments. We are waiting on Komatsu to come out, run some pressures on it to find out. Hopefully tell us what possibly will. It's just clutch packs or the rest of it, make sure it's. I don't want to invest too much into it. When, three months, four months from now, we're intending on rotating it out after the first of the year. So he's currently operating with a spare line. Hopefully this week we'll kind of get an idea of what exactly's wrong. What they'll take to fix it. Transmissions are typically about thirty, thirty-five thousand. Transmissions are typically about thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars. So I, I find it hard to invest that kind of money because I'm not really intending on replacing it.
Are they going to get it back out of it?
No. We sold those motor graders last year, they sold really well. Great that we had about a month left, a little less than a month left. They're not moving very well this time.
Yeah.
Gets closer to the end, but-
There will, it's long done. Last year, three days, it's almost up here.
I'm pressing the finish. That motor grader, it's a 2004, has about thirteen thousand hours on it. And it's done a whole lot too.
So just for clarification, you're just going to let it sit?
At the moment, until we can get it checked. Find out what it's going to cost to do repairs if we do decide to do repairs.
Where does that have to go to be checked?
They're going to come out here. They'll hook on to it for ages and everything. Everything was fine when they left and the dudes immediately started losing it about fourth year. It'd be nice to give some good news, but I don't want that. We did interviews the last couple of weeks. I got two gentlemen I'd like to hire. One is for a blade operator. And the other one will be a truck driver of a generally missing.
Have they done it for you? They haven't done it. We still have to try to ask them.
I believe they got started on that last week. I don't think we've got the answer back yet.
Do they have CDL?
Yes, both of them have CDLs.
Have either of them been pleased prior?
Not yet. One was employed with City of Salina, I believe, for twenty-five plus years. Employee in the middle. The other one was a former in KDOT, employed for five years.
So what will be your intention for a new blade operator?
Gary Fuller.
I mean, what will be your procedure to get him started or to introduce him to the job or the expectations?
Take him around. He should have had experience on a blade and stuff. Then I'll explain some of how we want things and what we normally do, ensuring the route he'll have and what his priority roots and all that stuff.
You're going to do that personally?
Yeah. Been working with a guy named Matt made out there, has territory he can carry with him all the time. Instead of just to marry a little-
What territory is this? Southwest of town here. South and west of this. Know if we need to operate along with John here, so we'll do that too.
What's your wish?
I'd move separately or whatever.
Yeah, I'll assume motor time.
I would move employee Gary Fuller as a blade operator, subject to-
Pre-employment?
Screening.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Been moved in second to employ Gary Fuller, any discussion? On Thursday night?
Aye. Twelve thirty, it says on here.
Twelve thirty, yeah.
I'd move the employee Jonathan Nelson, a truck driver, twelve thirty-two. Slid me to pre-employment screening.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Been moved in second to employ Jonathan Nelson, twelve thirty an hour. Pending pre-employment. Any questions? On Thursday night?
Aye.
So, go, go, go.
Which, um, which one was KDOT personnel?
Jonathan.
So if the other one worked for the city, how does he have blade experience?
At the landfill there.
Oh.
Or for- And we received a resignation from our head mechanic this morning. We'll be moving this in two weeks today. Advertise for that position here directly.
He received it today?
What's happening?
Received it today.
Yes. And for some good news, Lincoln Fire, First Rule Fire, Lincoln Rescue Squad received a hundred fifty-four thousand dollar grant for new air packs Friday. We'll be getting those purchased and bring through the building and everything prior to beginning of year if everything works out fine.
Where'd that rank come from?
FEMA, in assistance for firefighters here.
You have any?
Twenty-five.
Twenty?
We've been working on that for, I don't know, five years now.
Yeah, I think so.
That was the first year we dropped it from a countywide project to just our fire station past, so. I hope-
So you think we need to do that with the other fire stations to specifically do that for me? Or?
I would recommend it, but it is a lot of work and finding somebody that, chief or whatever, that's going to have the time to get all the information pulled together and put together. For this year, we hired Grant Masters, I believe they're out of New York, to ride our grant for us. And this year we're going for the refill station, cascade system and all that for filling these blanks.
And you said that was First Rule Rescue and-
City.
And so, in other words-
Everything on our station.
How is the station, is it? Thanks for your work on that, Mike. I know you've worked on it for five years or more.
Thank you.
Persistence, persistence pays off sometimes.
Sometimes. Sometimes does. Be a big benefit. Primary responders on structures and hazards. Boy, they never have to use them.
They do that on contingency?
What's that?
Do they do that on contingents? You have to pay them or they come out and grant?
We got to pay like twenty percent on it. I don't know what that exact-
But you don't if you don't get the grant.
What's that?
It's contingent on you getting the grant, though. If you don't get the grant, you don't have to pay them.
Yeah. Oh, on the Grant Masters?
Yeah.
No, we had to pay upfront for it, the writing.
Where are they from?
I think it's in New York. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Somewhere up in the northeast.
Sometime in Florida.
You know, we had more central Kansas write that for us for four years. Never had any luck and I got agitated, so we changed it. Lisa Philpamp wrote herself this year, so. Got to give her some kudos on that, I suppose, too.
Okay, I have another picture here. You guys may want to see this. See one beside her. See one right beside her. So this is on 50th. Can you see that? You can get, it's on 50th, just south of Union. You can see where someone had come through with some sort of bucket and just nicely scooped off a bunch of our gravel for themselves. And if you... See where the marks are that they came and scooped it up? Okay, so if you go up to the corner of the intersection, there's a nice post from Wilson Communications that is standing erect in a pile of our gravel.
So that's 50th and Union?
Yeah. Um, and there was, there were a couple spots along there and they took that out. So whoever the subcontractor is for Wilson Communication that's been doing this, I don't know where all of this has happened, but I did-
They've been going out of here for several months now.
Well, no, that's fresh.
They might have, they might have all here. We had one down by Dustburg here that had it in that.
But is that, is that the same contractor that did all that work?
I think it was Wilson Thomas Company themselves that first, so that's what they paid to come back and fix it.
What, what, what did they ever come back and do? Did they ever pay us for gravel or reimburse us for anything for all those, like through Denmark where they dug up?
No.
No? So that we've never received anything from them? Well, I, I don't know if this is an isolated incident, but it's definitely a problem. I mean, we can't have that happening. We can't maintain it ourselves, let alone let them permanently take a loan on it, so.
I'll talk to them.
Okay.
They probably come back on a junk truck in when they filled that one in there at Dustburg.
Well, I just feel that, you know, if, if they're going to have that kind of relationship with our county-
They got anything to do? Wilson Thomas Company themselves, yeah.
I don't know if they do a lot.
I don't think it was them. I think it was a sub.
They usually hire somebody to do their work for them.
But I'm saying, I, I'm, if, if that's reflective of what has been done throughout that area where they've been installing fiber and putting in, you know, boxes, we need compensated. So I would definitely take that approach. Where are we at on the hiring process as far as filling your vacancies? I'm not sure. You said, I think last time you said four relieving, so that's two potentially. So you're still looking at two and a mechanic?
We made part-time and full-time last week.
I got one position on bridge crew I can hire for right now. One that will more than likely open up within a week or two, depending on FMA status. And then, uh-
What does that mean?
Family medical evaluation.
Oh. Sorry, okay. So basically a bridge crew and mechanic?
Two bridge crew, one mechanic, yes.
So is the bridge crew responsible for culvert maintenance? Or is that, does that fall back on the operator of the blade for his personal route?
Good, Mr. George?
Good.
Say, it used to be a kind of the blade man. And I had a crew that just did that and a district person that went around and helped and worked on them. We don't anymore, so kind of tend to call back onto the bridge crew and try to maintain them. Blade people have to kind of watch and see what they need out there. And if they can do it, they'll do it. And if they can't, we'll send the crew to the bridge crew.
Okay, so was it the bridge crew who did all the tree cutting this year? When you guys did a bunch of tree cutting this spring?
Blade people and some gravel crew. There'll be whoever was available and wasn't doing something else for the tree.
Okay.
They probably helped build some trees too, depending on the weather.
So, for, for instance, in my district there in the north central part, I spent a bunch of time there this weekend. And every culvert, if it's not plugged, it's got a bunch of brush and, and things washed up against the openings and or washed through to the exit side. So who is, you know, who's responsible for that or what kind of schedule are they on to remove some of that debris?
Well, we try whenever in the area and most of that we try it after the floods and stuff to try to get out. But if we didn't make it there, we'll, we could, I'd say, shorthanded and try and get everything else down and take the more hydro or yourself. Work on these as we're in the area. If the blade person can't get it, well, we're going to have to have the bridge people to carry it out.
So have you ever provided a map for the blade person that says, you know, this one, this one, this one, and this one are plugged and these two need brush pulled out of them? Or you're just expecting them?
They call, sure let me know what ones are so I can assess them.
Well, just from what I saw with my own eyes, I think that that tactic isn't working. I understand what you're saying, that we had gravel and projects and, well, the Chip Seal project and, you know, guys were cutting trees and doing that. But what I saw is not just something that happened this year. It's multiple-
Fourteen, fifteen years. So I can't catch up in one year. Especially when we have flooding conditions all over the county. It takes time to clear down. We got a thousand culverts and more around the country, keep up with it.
So if the bridge crew's not building bridges, which we don't do anymore, are they not on culvert duty? Would that not be considered? What else is the bridge-
They're working on wipers still right now. That's going to take a couple, three weeks to get there.
So that is a culvert?
Yeah.
And they did do the culverts over here to the west and southwest of the way?
Down here, down here. Yeah. I could sit and do nothing other. Like I say, it's for them to one person on the crew right now. So we're calling people out of other projects to go help them until we get a crew back.
So could we advertise for some part-time positions for people that don't necessarily have to have any skills to go in there and physically haul out, I mean, brush and debris that is plugging up these culverts?
They're going to have to have the experience and the equipment. They're going to have to be able to get one call and set them all out. It's rather difficult to dig on itself.
Bob, I'm not talking about anything that needs the use of a backhoe or anything like that. I'm talking, I could get in there myself, physically in my shape that I'm in, and haul out the branches and the brush that are down there. And I know how to use a shovel and to manipulate some dirt around. So it wouldn't take someone that has a CDL or anything like that. And if we could do part-time positions, we don't have to provide benefit packages for them. I think we need to take advantage of the last little bit of weather that we have here to do some physical labor outside that's a little more intensive. And if we can't put that expectation on our own guys because as you say, they're too busy, then how are we, if we can't look at some positions for part-time, how are we going to solve that problem?
We have to keep trying to work it out. I'd say if we get full crew and set back again, we'll level out and we'll free up some people that we can do some of that stuff with.
But like I said, you've had a full crew periodically over the last five years. I'm looking at things that haven't been touched in five years.
I can't break that because I don't have been here a couple of years now, back there since I retired. Long time to be as good while I can now. Long time to be as good while I can now, catch up for all those years.
Before you came back to the county, were you in the same position that you're in?
He was a blade operator.
Yeah.
He had done, no, so he had done that before.
When I retired, I was a brick supervisor. When I retired, I'm doing.
Then he came back as a blade operator. Then he moved to this position.
I know you don't wanna hear this coming from me, so just pretend it's coming from someone else. But someone's gonna have to go out there and mark down and say, this point on the map needs addressed, and it needs addressed within this timeframe. And there's gonna have to be an expectation set. Because every time that we have this conversation for the last nine months, I'm told that you guys as the managers are leaving it up to the people who are on their routes and who on their equipment to report to you what needs done and or to get it done themselves. And that is not a good structure for a, a large employer, so to speak. With twenty-five employees in the department, that's fairly large. A large employer by the state standards has fifty employees. So we're, you know, on that cusp of being a large employer just with that particular department. There has to be more structure of setting expectations for people in their positions with what they're supposed to achieve and, and, and how to get it done maybe. I don't think that we can continue saying, well, you know, whoever's in that area is responsible. Because if it doesn't get done, then, then who takes the responsibility after that? I'm not sure. Under this, under this setup, I'm not sure how that's supposed to work. I don't think it's possible. And Michael, I know you just said a few meetings ago that there's no way that you can drive around all these roads. And I understand, we have a thousand miles of road. That's a lot to cover. However, well, am I under the wrong impression that we purchased the county truck that you drive so that there was a king-size cab and, and there could be some road supervision done, but even by the commission? Was that not part of the pretense of that purchase?
I'm out on the road every day.
That didn't answer my question, Terry. You're avoiding my question.
No, I'm not. I'm out on the road every day. I see problems all the time.
Did the county purchase the highway department vehicle that is driven by the public works director so that it had an extended cab for viewing so that people could go out and do routes and, and oversee some of these areas so that there was supervision? Was that part of the purchase plan?
I guess I don't understand the point you're trying to make. It has an extra cab. You want four people to ride around them to pick up and look for problems, or what?
So you don't wanna answer my question?
I don't understand your question.
When you purchased the vehicle for the, for the highway department, the pickup truck, was it, was it with the intention that there would be accompaniment of one or more commissioners to be able to go around with the highway department and look at projects or look at overview roads?
No. No, it wasn't. It was, they have extended cabs in case we need to haul people to sites so we can get around, we didn't need as many pickups.
Future use of the vehicle after-
When he's done with it, it's gonna go to the, to another part of the county and they will use it to transport workers. No, it was never intended for them to just ride around.
Well, then I'm being misinformed.
But it has been used for that in the past.
Yeah, we have done with the bridges and different things with it, yeah.
So then who in this whole scenario takes on the responsibility of saying, this is what needs done by this person in this amount of time, period?
It's a time limit now. We're gonna do this today because today this falls apart and this breaks down. So we have a problem over here. Can't just say, today we're doing this, tomorrow we're doing this.
It's our intentions, but it doesn't always happen.
We have a figure. We'd like to do it, but we can't do it always, we're it.
Again, we've had this conversation before too. I understand there are unforeseen circumstances. That's life in general. But without a plan going into a scenario, there's no reason to even consider unforeseen circumstances. You, you have to have a plan. And if, if, it's just like, when you schedule with a contractor to come in and build your bridge, do they not give you an estimated date of completion?
They got a total number of working days that they're given by the state, so they usually use it all.
So the point is, there's still a projection and a plan in place. And from a managerial standpoint, which is this, this room right now, this is the managerial sector of the highway department. You know, you guys are set up as, um, co, you know, supervisors, so to speak, over this one particular department. They've now moved two other departments underneath your management, and then you report to the commission. So as a group, we need to decide what the plan is and how to take action on that plan. It doesn't mean that it's gonna happen at two or three P M on, you know, Friday the sixth. I understand that. I'm not asking for that kind of detail. I'm saying that as a group, we need to have an actual plan, and I have yet to see that. So when you bring something like this, Michael, and you have everything plotted out for the intersections and the signs and approximately how much it's gonna cost, that is wonderful. We should have this across the county. And that doesn't mean that it's all going to get done. But having the plan in place gives the next person something to work with, instead of always coming planning one thing at a time. That's not good management. It's not good time management.
Do you have a list of projects that you're gonna do?
Yeah, Bob's got it. We, we plan everything out. It's just every year you have certain things that you must get done. When we operate the scale we are at, just we get done what we can get done. You know, it's just like fair weather. You know, if we have enough people, we haul gravel once a night. I'd love to be hauling gravel right now, but instead of them hauling gravel, they're out helping blade guys mow. And they're also assisting with the bridge crew so we can get that project done. Because we got the crane company and everything coming in this Thursday to put all that stuff in, so we gotta have everything ready at that point. You know, but this time of year, we mow. Here in another month and a half, we need to go around and put up snowflakes. You know, you wanna have all your load done before your first snow flies. You know, the blade guys still have their hundred and ten miles of road that they gotta take care of. Whether or not they stop and clean out around that culvert or not is dependent on whether they have time to get their stuff done or not. You know, this winter, everyone, we plan on cutting trees, and we do cut trees.
Have you ever told them not to blade the dirt roads if it has rain?
I haven't blade dirt roads. If you look at weeds down the dirt road, they're going like crazy. They're, they're tall. We got a couple paths down. A lot of these dirt roads, if they don't go out there and blade them off, they'll ruin the steam or weed and air ditching because they're knocking mirrors off their vehicles and stuff. So we have to blade them to get the weeds down before the snow blows.
Well, if you're hitting weeds with your mirror, that's the outside of the road which gets mowed.
I'm like, you got two paths down there where traffic's big down the weeds. They don't keep on blading them. Weed this time of year is just going crazy. So they have to blade the dirt roads to try to get them down before the snow blows. And we have to try to mow them while we're doing the blade. So we have to put that people to do that too. And when we lose four or five people or a police, then we're in a fine time to get all this done.
I understand that, and I commend you guys on your ability to organize this lack of project. It's, I mean, that happened in a hurry, as I said last week. That wasn't something that we had planned for this year, but we initiated it and got it rolling pretty much right away. So I, I do think that you deserve, you know, credit for doing that. What I'm trying to address is the overall plan. And, you know, looking at what a year means and how much potential work you can get done in a year. You can say that you have notes and, and you have projects and you know what you need to do regularly on a yearly basis. But when you come here to report to the commission, if, if you don't have things kind of in a presentable manner, which, I guess at some point, maybe I should just take the time to give you an example. You know, I don't know how much visiting you've done with other counties and whatnot, but, for example, I was, I, I said this last, last two meetings ago or so. I was told that certain areas aren't blading dirt roads at all in the summer if it's not raining. So they're not blade, they're not blading for weed control. You know, that time needs to be analyzed and the cost of doing that work versus what else needs done and the-
So someone within our county has reported to you that they don't blade any dirt roads in the summer?
No, this is another county.
Another county, and the county was, uh-
Ottawa, Ottawa. I've just spent a lot of time in Ottawa County.
Again, they have township.
And they're taking a meeting to get some damage, so.
I'm sorry. What did, I, I missed what you said.
There are township units. Townships have to take care of the off roads. They just take care of the main road of Mitchell County, Auger County, all these counties. They only have three or four hundred miles of road they take care of. Townships take care of the other roads. And the townships, a lot of them don't have the money. They can't do that to them maybe once or twice a year. Too many damn roads, so.
Okay, if that's the board's wish that we stop blading dirt roads, we can definitely stop blading dirt roads if that's the board's wish.
They have to buy a bunch more mowers and mow them. I would think it would be a lot faster and economical to blade.
It's not about doing it or never doing it. It's about the frequency and having an expectation of, you know, what that looks like. Which I can't give you the details on that. I'm, I'm not experienced in that. I'm just saying, when you compare and you talk to other people, you have to take into consideration what our priorities are. Okay, so Bob, I hear what you're saying, and I understand that you're concerned about maintaining those weeds. But what would the cost be comparatively to, like you're saying, do mowing et cetera, or hire some, hire another person to do mowing, a full year's wages versus the cost that we are incurring by letting some of these bridges deteriorate? The small, the culverts, they're considered, I guess, by state standard because they're not over the twenty-foot span or whatever. But when you look at the deterioration, like we talked about on some of these rock stone arch bridges and things like that, in the long run, in the long run, that is extremely more expensive to us. I mean, there's no comparison there. So if we're not taking the time to do the maintenance so that those culverts, the small ones, the stone ones, so that they're not deteriorating at such a rate, you know, we're doing ourselves in. That's, that's what, and this isn't, I mean, this is decades long. I'm not saying we did this yesterday. This is decades long of the wrong approach. We have to take the time to do that, those little maintenance things. And if it means cutting corners on not, you know, expecting their, the dirt roads to be bladed every three weeks in the summer, then that's what that means. I don't know. That's your job as supervisors to, to decide that. And I'm just telling you that there's something wrong with the current way that it's going. Because, like you said, we can't keep up. And the way that these culverts are deteriorating, they're gonna cost us exponentially more amounts of money than anything that has to do with gas or mowers or personnel time and paychecks.
Are dirt roads really being graded every three weeks? Because I lived on a dirt road for years that was never graded, but maybe once or twice a year. Is that really seriously even happening, or is that just somebody saying that it's being bladed?
Well, Bob just said they do it for weed control.
But you're saying every three weeks. I don't imagine that they're really grading it every three weeks.
That was an example. I'm just sort of hypothetical.
Dirt roads, years ago, our school bus routes, our mail routes. So you want us to let them go, weed grow up like this? We can do that. That's your wish. I gladly park machines. If that's what you wish. That's school board and the mail. People come in here and haul it. I don't care.
Well, I think the, the way that you're responding to my explanation means that you're not taking that in stride with the way that I'm trying to describe it. So I apologize. You seem offended. And that's not my, that's not my desire, is to offend you personally. But the way you're responding means that you're not hearing what I'm saying. So we'll have to just find another way to discuss that.
You have anything else, Bob?
No, I guess not. I'd say I was just working on that wacker set there. Getting the area, getting all the items set up there. Pretty well, get up there and check. We're trying to get it leveled off and stuff to set them in, and they come Thursdays. We got that pipe hole out and everything pretty much ready. Put a fine finish on it. They're working finished. Now they're welding truck here this morning. They think things getting finished. We've got a lot of welding to do. Checking out of the welder so we get those running and we get started up there. And that. And just, I'd say, again, blading and stuff, just one hole down the other, you know. Shake up the dirt, set up yours. You have anything else, Michael?
No.
Marvin, did you have something you wanted to ask?
Yeah, when you do with that dirt, when you clean out the culverts or the ditches, can you put it back on the land on the property or you haul it off? Depends on the situation.
It totally depends on the situation where it is. Travel roads that will get hauled off and used on another project.
Okay. That dirt comes from private property because of the road. Doesn't-
Sure, percentage of it is private.
That's private property. That dirt should go back on my property.
We'll do that for you if that's what you're thinking.
Well, that's what you have to do for everybody, because then you're taking it. That's the type of take.
Most of the guys want us to make the road better. They don't wanna deal with the pile of dirt.
I understand that.
Just wait back up on, on the, can't do that. We got fences put on there. This.
Because it's, that's, that's, you can't control rain. So when you roll, but it's still private property. That's the fact, like, take. And they're having problems in other counties with this.
If that's their dirt, then is that their crop residue that's plugging up the culvert stick?
Do what?
If it's their dirt, is it also their crop residue that's plugging up the culvert?
Once it comes off private property because the county has control of these roads, that is county maintenance.
Then it's kind of dirt, I guess.
No, it isn't.
What's the difference between the dirt and crop residue?
Na- nature made that come off there. You can't control rain, Terry.
Speaking of ditches-
We can control this residue, the no-tail stuff, Terry. I know that's a problem. That's me. We got all these culverts and stuff. They're pug.
Do you want us to willfully block them right away?
Did you do a mail out with the, the notice?
Not yet. It's gonna go out with the tax and it's gonna be sometime before Thanksgiving.
I forgot. Let's go with the taxes. And speaking of ditches, do you have a recommended suggestion for any of your blade operators as to how often they need to be pulling ditches? Or at what point does the blade operator look at the road and say, this ditch needs to be pulled? How do you tell them how to assess that?
Exactly. When I have time, I work in the conditions I like and stuff, teach them some of the edges and ditches.
Okay, but I'm saying, you're gonna hire this new guy. What's his name? Gary. And he's gonna get in a blade, and this is gonna be his first time on a rural route. And when you take him around, Bob, what are you gonna say to him about pulling ditches? Because remember, we talked about K dot, when they give you your training, they say, ditches, 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 you know, they're so important. So when you take Gary out on his route for the first time, are you gonna tell him, oh, this one looks like it needs done soon? And, or are you just gonna tell him, hey, if you don't think this ditch is deep enough? I mean, are you gonna let it, leave it up to him? Or are you gonna tell him which ditches need pulled?
I remember you said, yes, some of these that are bad, yeah. When you get caught up, you need to work on this. And also, you know, so I can put one call in before you start digging. I mean, you can't just go out and do that.
So you do, you personally do the one calls?
Usually, right. Michael usually sends them in.
So you have to send in something?
Hold on.
Oh, oh. Oh, oh.
I have another question I need to ask. When you have a chance to repair, do you repair it or replace it? I've had an employee tell me that all you had to do was weld up the gate. And he said, the supervisor told me, no, take it down. We're gonna buy a new one. And he says, all I needed was welding.
On what?
On the gate.
What gate?
Landfill.
Why, why, why didn't you just weld it? Why did you decide to throw it away and buy a new one? Because if you do see the gate? I'm just gonna work. You could weld up anything. I could weld up anything.
Yeah, you can weld up anything, but still gotta get some junk.
Well, now I guess you're welding very good, isn't it?
I don't believe that's appropriate conduct, this, this situation.
I have a question about-
Hear say from someone to you?
I have a question going back to the ditches. When you put in your one call, how much time? They say they take up to three days or something to get it back to you. Okay, so after that, how much time do you have?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. So right there, the time constraint that we can't keep to-
Because there are other things that's happened. We can't get there. Weather conditions, rain.
Right, but they don't charge us for that, the one call. They do that. So you can do that as many times over as you need to, if you happen to run out of time.
Yeah, we have to redo it.
But basically, if I were a grader operator, I could call you and say, hey, you know, a long twentieth for this, two miles, I wanna dig, I wanna pull these ditches. And you can do that, and then they have two weeks to do it.
I just talked to the phone man this morning because I got a one call in and he wanted to know exactly what was down. I think he'll need to plate man tomorrow so he can start working on it.
So in the year 2017, which now is September, how many times have you put in a one call?
I don't remember.
Fifty, two hundred times probably, Bob.
And is that concentrated in any one particular region of our? So you're saying each grader operator has made the same amount of phone calls to you for one calls?
Yeah, I don't think we have the same one.
I'm, I'm relatively close.
The flooding deals and all this stuff, all probably have been.
Oh, so the flooding was-
Certain number. I'm gonna do ten for you, ten for you. Can't do that.
But you're saying the flooding was a lot of it?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. So what, what would it have been like the previous year, 2016?
Wash out, stuff.
I can't tell you for sure.
Significantly less because there wasn't flooding?
I doubt it.
He, he just got done saying that the flooding was-
But it also delayed a lot of other projects that we never got to do because it was too bad to do anything else. You know, therefore, at a time when we would have been calling one calls in on ditches or culverts or something like that, we would end up calling in one calls for flooding. And then we're only doing something in that part of the county. But the rest of the county is too bad to do any work at all whatsoever. You know, weather offsets us immensely. You know, it just doesn't affect this. It affects everything.
But what you're telling me, if a hundred and fifty is typical in three quarters of the year?
That's just a guess. I couldn't tell you without research.
Well, just, that's how you, okay, you don't have to do the research specifically. I'm just saying hypothetically, this is how you make a plan. So let's say there have been a hundred and fifty calls in three quarters of the year. And are you calling in mainly for a one mile stretch or how are, how are they requesting that?
It's specific to the job you do. Now, if you're in place in a culvert, you measure out the distances, what you do. Because if you call in a whole mile for a culvert replacement, those guys come knocking on your door wanting to know why their market's so much extra.
I have to walk all up and down the street and you're just getting this little stretch.
Well, I'm not, you don't have to report to them. That's not their job to question you. That's their job to report for the one call, period. But my question is, what percentage of your one calls are for culverts versus pulling ditches?
Culverts probably, well, exceed ditches.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm saying, is it seventy-five percent or ninety percent? There's a difference there, you know?
Probably ninety percent.
This is weather related.
You know, it depends.
I wrote it back there in my book. In ninety-nine, we put in a hundred and fifteen one calls that year.
What year was that?
Ninety-nine.
You keep your notes with you back from nineteen ninety-nine? That's pretty impressive.
Twenty-five hundred feet of culvert. We go thirty, thirty-two miles of road. Seventy-three thousand yards to go.
Well, it's ten o'clock.
We need to wrap this up because Kathy's out here wanting to see us. Have a good week, guys.
Appreciate you too.
Thank you for the discussion, guys.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you guys?
Good morning.
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay, I wanted to tell you about, I applied for a, I applied for a project with, if you're familiar with Kansas Sample Foundation.
Sample?
Uh-huh. Kansas Sample Foundation, Adam Eminence, Marcy Panner. And she has started, it's called WECAN, W capital W E, capital K A N. And it is an option of the Kansas Sampler Foundation. And what she is doing is, it's a crowdfunding platform. So what you do is you put your project on this WECAN website. And then whatever your project is, Pike Valley wanted to start a library for high school. And so they put on a video on the website and then this crowdfunding platform, people gave money and funded the library. So they put this out to the whole state. And it was to select three different groups throughout the state. And what they would do is they would put all of their efforts into getting this site up and running. It's been up and running, but they want to get publicity out across the state, across the United States, across the world. Because like Lincoln, like every small community, even in the big communities, it's really hard to keep asking the same people for money. And so we at Lincoln are, the district are very cognizant that we can't keep asking the banks, you know, all, all the businesses. We can't keep having our hand out. So I applied and we were one of three projects that they picked from the state of Kansas. It was USD two nine eight. It was a greater area, United Way out of Topeka. And it was the Opera House in Anshiason, Kansas. And so we, what we would like to do is we would like to put an LED sign out on Highway eighteen in front of the high school. And it would be available for the city of Lincoln City, the county of Lincoln, and for the high school. And so what we will do is we can advertise. We wanna get our name out. We wanna get the good things that we're doing. We wanna be able to put this LED sign out there and put our activities, our athletic attendance, things that are going on within our district. We wanna do this for the city and for Lincoln County. So like the economic development. And then this will be a new way to potentially gain revenue for our business classes because they will be running this part of the sign. And they can sell advertisement. But it would be free to all nonprofits. So I wanted to make you aware of this. We, we finished our video on Friday. And so you were a part of our video. We filmed downtown and we have shots throughout Lincoln. And I just wanted you to make aware of that. I, I, I guess I assumed you would support this project, but it would be available to Lincoln County. It would be available if you wanted to send stuff to the business class. They will put it on the sign. So I wanted to show you a picture of the sign. We have contacted, this is a copy of the sign. It's LED. It is the newest, it's the newest type of LED construction, I guess you would say. It's of the highest resolution. It's going to be thirty-seven point five by sixty-three, full color LED, single faces mounted as one unit. It's got the LED sign resolution of ten millimeters. And then Travis Schwartz Baker will be building the brick encasement. It's gonna be farther up the ground because if you're in a car, you wanna, you're gonna want it higher up. So that's hopefully loaded the ground. I went and took a picture of, and I had it on my phone, a keeper sign. And his is more probably where we will put the actual LED part of it.
Is this the section? Are you talking about this?
That will be the section where the LED is.
Top of the bucket?
The, where the flag is.
The bucket?
Yes, yes. But that's gonna be off the ground. We're gonna put it because if you're driving, we don't wanna have to, we don't want people to look down. We want people to look more eye level up. So you'll be able to see it from both ways of Highway eighteen, Highway eighteen. I wrote a grant last year which was turned down and so, so-
Is it double sided?
Yes, it's double sided, uh-huh. And we just feel like for both the county, the city, the district, this will be huge for Lincoln. It will almost be a work of art. So I just wanted you to make aware because once we get the video, we will be sending it to the WECAN project and Luke Mahan out of, out of actually Portland. And he will be doing the publicity for it. So I've already contacted alumni from USD two nine eight. We'll get an email. Plus, they will be pushing it out to all of the Kansas Sampler people. It's, I mean, it's, it's huge. It doesn't sound huge, but it is, it's, it's huge for the district and the county and the city. So I wanted to make you aware of it. It could be, I mean, I personally think it's great for Lincoln. We'll be able to showcase this. I bet you this is one of the mine on Highway eighteen. And you know, Highway eighteen goes way, way west, I think to the Kansas border. Or if not, it just, it goes almost there. So we're excited. We wanted you to know about it. Didn't know if you had any questions. When I get, when we get the video done, it should be edited probably today or tomorrow. I can send Donna a copy of it and she can email it to you. And I can also send you the WECAN website so you can go and look for it. Marcy Panner, if you know her, she's fantastic. She's so supportive of Kansas. And she was really excited that we got picked, so it's a proud moment for us.
Does this mean that your high school business classes wander more? I don't know how many you have, but they're going to maintain it and either ways funds generated. Or how, how are they gonna oversee that, just out of curiosity?
Well, what will happen is that through, if you, through the new accreditation cycle, we have a whole new accreditation cycle that the Board of Education has put forth. And we are having to redesign education. And part of that redesigning education is giving students hand-on business experience. Like our woods classes and our metal classes are going to start building and selling like garfs and sheds. We're hoping maybe, cross our fingers, this year we will be able to open up a storefront on Main Street to sell kids wares. Well, this, instead of having our business class have, let's say that you as a business owner wanted to put an ad on this, they would come out, they would be kind of like conference, they would be with you. What design key was? They would come up with a design. And then they would work through the finances. So, you know, one year it would cost you, I don't know, fifty dollars. I don't know what it would be. But one year it would cost you this and then they would both do, we have a design class and then we have a business class. So we would be taking care of on both sides. That gives kids kind of the real end of business. They'll be able to put plans together, present them. And then on the other side, they'll be able to bill you and work through those finances. So that's how we're hoping it's gonna work. But you know how things go. It's sometimes you have to tweak here and there.
That's a good idea. Interesting.
Yeah, so, and like I said, there would be no, no cost for nonprofits. But we're going to, it's kind of like our sign at the basketball, the new basketball table that they can just get bought for us. You know, we sell advertisement on there. So that's gonna be something that is gonna be seen by a lot of people. So, do you have any questions? I'll get the video to you and I, and you can, and Donna can email that out if it's gonna be emailable. If not, I can send you a link when we get it up and running on the crowdfunding. But we're hoping, we're thinking it's gonna be about forty thousand dollars. So we're hoping. And this is gonna go out to, I mean, my opinion, we need to start acting like kind of, kind of the battalion colleges. You have all of this, these alumni. You have this whole world out there. We need to be more creative instead of just keeping like up the street because that's just not, for the long haul, that's not good for people up here and that's not good for the community to keep taking money out, so.
How many are you gonna be soliciting?
I don't know. That is, once we get them the video, it is, that's why we were picked because they will do all of this for us and I don't have this. Those people will be up to, we can't, we signed the contract with them and they will, until it's probably a hundred percent fundraised, yeah. And so, and maybe however long it takes. But it sounds like most of them have been right around between a hundred and a hundred and fifty days. And I know that sounds long, but there's been some pretty hefty fundraisers that have been on that, so. I think it's exciting. So anyway, I just wanted to come and tell you. So if you heard about it or anything, you would have an explanation, so.
Thanks for sharing.
Yep, yep. You're welcome. Thank you. Have a great day.
You too. Okay, Alexis, I'm sure.
Okay, I am interested to know if you guys have ever done any sort of strategic plan or had anything with the highway department in the past? Just based on some of the things we discussed here just a little bit ago.
I don't know if we've done strategic plans on other, that we used to do five-year bridge plans.
Is that because you had to turn it into the state?
What?
A five-year bridge plan?
That's what the program used to be. They had, um, rotation.
When did that quit?
Uh, three or four, five years ago. I don't remember. They changed the funding setup. They did away with the five-year bridge plans.
Certainly, we did strategic planning on replacing these road graders that we were dropping. And that was, it took three or four years to figure out how we were ever gonna finance something like that. But that's something we've, we've worked on. And also since the five-year bridge plan, we've been working on some of these bridges that were deemed that need to be closed, how we were going to keep the major ones open. And which ones were gonna be on the priority list. Sometimes that had to do with just the fact of which one was gonna fall down first.
Exactly.
I mean, you know, that's, but we're constantly looking at those things. We're looking at road sealing. We went four years, one year, and we found out that wouldn't work. So, I mean, we-
You went four years without doing a chip project? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, we let a road build for four years, yeah.
Still don't do it on three-year rotation?
On the three-year rotation, we start tried a four-year rotation. Found out that was more costly not to do that.
In repairs later, yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, we're constantly doing some planning with them. I mean, as to be specific roads, that's pretty well left up to them. They know which roads need to be regravelled and re-trimmed. If we get, if we get calls about one, check it out. Usually it's on their list to be done soon. That's when those, so it's, we're-
So you've done the chip seal project three years. Has that been a longstanding, how long has that gone on? Twenty years or more? The, the chip seal projects that you do for those main roads every three years? Like, that's been-
You do a third for every year.
Right, but I mean, how long have you, like, for twenty-five years or?
Forever.
Okay, so-
Probably whenever they started building them.
Okay, yeah, well, I mean, that's a, you're sticking to the plan that someone created.
The chip sealed roads were previously gravelled, but they improved the chips.
And then the, the road graders, you were obviously paying for them outright. And then the road graders, you were obviously paying for them outright. And so, from what I understand, we have two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, right? For two, for four total more, is what your plan was when you started. And we've done, what, six of them? Seventy, I'm telling, that's right.
And the reason being, it's like you said, we got a possible thirty thousand dollar repair on the transmission. So, we were spending over a hundred thousand dollars a year repairing the old machines, and that's when we made the decision to get them all under warranty at some point, before you don't have the repair costs to come to it.
And the newer machines we bought, our mechanics weren't able to, they didn't have the equipment to check them on the computers and stuff that they use now to do that work. So it was becoming a costly operation, because we had to send them in.
So then we're locating, okay, let me ask one more question then. The OS one forty-five that's now finished, that just got finished, was that, when did, when did that project, when was that planned?
Oh, God, I suppose that started three or four years ago, didn't it?
Yeah, probably longer than that. The chef first brought it to our attention.
Yeah.
That something was gonna have to be done.
Because of inspection?
We tried to, we attempted to keep going in the county as we were with the five-year bridge, although it didn't exist anymore. And it's part of that matching funds that we get from the state. They just took another fifteen percent of it. That's where that money basically was utilized. But we just kind of tried to continue the five-year bridge plan, even though the funding for the five-year bridge plan went away.
We pushed to get the river bridges done.
Yeah, it used to be, I don't know exactly how to explain it. You had a schedule in that plan where Bridge A, you started doing the engineering on. And then it was like a, from the time you started, you submitted stuff to the state. And it was like a three-year process to get a bridge complete. Something like that. And you just stayed on, you had five bridges on that plan.
In a different phase every time.
So it actually stretched out about fifteen years. But it kept you, it kept your engineering going, and then your field checks, and, you know, different things like that.
Okay, is that, do you think one forty-five is one of the biggest bridges we have?
No. Biggest bridge is probably the Helmer Bridge. The reason I have there was to fill. They started out the five-year bridge plan. The objective was, while the funding was there, to get all the river bridges accomplished, because those were the high-dollar bridges. And they basically did that. And then...
What do we have left then of the river bridges?
That's pretty well it, other than that Helmer. And I don't see it ever getting built, because of the cost of it. Then they tramped, switched over to the river bridges. We switched over to doing the bigger county bridges. But the objective was to complete, get the river bridges that they were gonna do completed before the funding dried up, because they were way more expensive because of the length of them.
Well, the Helmer Bridge was on our state plan for many years, but the state wouldn't approve it as a project.
Why?
Because of the cost. And I think the low traffic, because I think they didn't do traffic studies.
It was by far the longest bridge that would be built in the county.
I didn't realize that.
How long is that thing? I don't remember. The problem is putting in a new one, that's going to skew. And that made it even longer. So they wouldn't go back the way it was.
Okay, so, the thing I'd like to address about the bridges is that if we don't plan some serious maintenance on these rock bridges, they're not gonna be there. And then you're looking at a replacement cost that is outrageously higher than what it's going to be to do some maintenance here in the near future.
They do repair work on bridges.
I'm sorry?
They do do some repair work on bridges.
We haven't done any of this yet.
We pointed at this issue.
You talking about pointing up to COVID and stuff?
Well, what the county can do is take out some of the wash and the silt that is coming over the wing walls. That, for sure, the county can do. And then what we may be looking at for subbing out is the block work, as far as, you know, replacing, putting them back up if they fall, and then pointing them, of course. Some of them just need point, you know, tuck point or whatever for superficial. Others are literally deteriorating on the edges. And if we don't get to that, we're gonna look at actual structural damage of underneath, which is not there yet. And if we don't make an attempt to address some of these right now in the next couple of years, that's gonna be damaging five, ten years from now, big time. I mean, I think we should look at it as one big project to do the, especially the stone bridges. And then I've noticed some of the concrete culverts that are like poured concrete, and then they have the very, you know, the side barriers, and they need to be, some attention needs to go there, because the silting that's happening when the grader pushes the dirt over the edges, that's just kind of burying them, and it's unnecessary weight and pressure. And then you get, if there's any wash that's coming, because the angle's wrong coming out of the ditch, there's like a whirlpool that's forming, and that's when we're getting all this debris plugging up the openings. I think I have a picture of one that I looked at.
I don't know what you're talking about.
I'm sorry?
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah. I mean, I would say that our lowest priority, obviously, would be the culverts alongside the roads that are parallel to the roads, you know? And I know a lot of them need attention, but I think we should be focusing and having, we need to formulate a plan to, you know, give to the highway department and expect them to kind of assess the nuances of how that's gonna play out. But we have to put an expectation on them of what we're considering a priority, because I don't hear us having any kind of conversations like that. And to me, you know, that's setting yourself up for failure. This one is...
I don't think they're gonna be telling anything they don't have to know.
Then why haven't we received any sort of formal, you see that one?
I think they do what they can do when they have the time to do it and the men to do it. That's the, somewhere along the line, I think they're having difficulty understanding that they don't have the manpower to get all this stuff done.
I haven't seen anything planned on paper. I haven't been given, I've seen all kinds of bids for different specific jobs. So obviously, someone's capable of doing one small planning project. I'm talking about having a strategic plan that, like you said, a five-year bridge plan that's on a rotation, so that they're in different phases at different times. That's the kind of stuff we don't have money for right now. What we do have money for are these smaller repair projects. I mean, you're talking about subbing out someone to do, you know, masonry work on some of these stone or concrete culverts. You can do, you know, quite a few of them all at the same time. It's not taking away from our manpower. We have to pay for it, of course. But that's a different kind of expense than a million-dollar bridge, like what was just done. And I haven't seen an assessment on the county on a map saying, you know, these are all the, these are the largest ones that need done. These are the most deteriorated ones that we need to, do we have fifty of them? Or do we have five hundred of them? You know, they're, neither one of you can tell me, and I haven't heard it from the highway department. That means no one has done the actual work to determine that. And we need to demand that that work be done. And if we can't expect that from our supervisors, then they're not fit for their jobs. Do you think that our highway department has the capability of mapping us out the priority projects for culverts in our county?
Sure.
Do you?
Sure.
I think they probably already do know.
Do you know? Do you know?
Why should I need to know? What good is it going to for me to know when I've hired somebody to take care of that job?
I think we know a lot of them, because they come in and tell us about them, or someone else calls us and tells us about them, and we relay information to them.
Okay, maybe you guys aren't understanding me. When we sit in here every week, and we have all these minute discussions about one particular project, like this road sign project, this shouldn't come across the commission table. This, you're sitting here saying, why should I need to know? Then why do you need to know about this tiny little seven-hundred-dollar project? What you're implicating to me is that you have no priorities. Because what should come across our desk is what this looks like for the whole county, not just for one, this one particular spot. And then we say, yes, we're gonna approve this section or that section. We don't just look at, we just made the decision to buy two signs today, when we're looking at a project that potentially needs done across the entire county. And I don't see, and Michael did a wonderful job at mapping out this one little community. But this needs done for the whole county on many levels, not just signs. It needs done for the culverts especially. That's what my concern, when I go out and look with my own eyes, is that. The bridges are a whole nother ballgame, because you're talking millions of dollars that somehow, I mean, whether we end up declaring a state of disaster emergency for the state to come in, I don't know how that's gonna pan out in the future. But the only thing we can control are...
State's gonna take it close, like they let state do it.
Well, and maybe that's a bridge we have to cross when we get there, pun intended. So what I'm talking about are, you know, things that we can do, things that we have actual control over. And you both just said that you believe that our highway department has the capability of providing us that information. I'm not sure, Aljo, and I couldn't disagree with you more as to why you think that that's not where you should have knowledge.
The reason this was brought to us is because it came in as a complaint from those people out there, the nine-one-one responders weren't able to find those streets. That's why that came to you.
Yes, Terry, I understand that, and it's a good thing ultimately. But what I'm saying is...
Do you want a piece of paper like that for every mile of road in Lincoln County? Is that what you want?
Absolutely. You think that that's too much to ask in today's day and era with technology and maps?
I think it's something that's time-consuming, and I don't need a picture of every mile of road in this county.
I'm not talking about a picture. You can print our whole county map, there it is, on a two-by-three-foot scale, and you can have, you can say it...
Thousand culverts marked, and...
That should have already been done. I shouldn't have to come in here and say that when you two have been here for more than a decade.
We don't need to know where every culvert is.
That's your, it's not your job to know where they all are. It's your job to know where the projects are happening, and if they're happening in a timely manner.
Monday, when they come in here, they tell us where they're working, where they're going next, lots of them.
That is more, you just said you don't wanna know where every culvert is, but you're gonna let them come in here and report to you on every miniscule job. I'm asking you to oversee the operation, not each job, week to week. When they come in and give you details of where they've been and where they're going, that's called micromanagement. But you say that that's not what you want to do.
No, I think what you're wanting to do is micromanage.
No, I'm wanting them to be organized.
Where to go next, and what to do next, and all that.
No, I wanted them to be organized. They should be able to furnish us their list of what they're doing, just like they want the grader operator to furnish them his list of what he's doing. If that guy isn't doing that, then it's up to them to tell that guy to do that, just like it's up to us as the commission to tell them to provide us that information, so that we know that they're going where they have a plan to go. Or that they have a plan at all. This is the whole problem. There is no plan.
Yeah, they do. They know what they're doing. They know where they're going next. They know what projects need done.
When I asked you both ten minutes ago what the strategic planning has been, your answers were the chip seal projects, which are every three years, and you know that you can't...
It's every year, the road, it's...
The rotation, excuse me, the rotation is every third year, the same one gets done again. And that plan was put into place prior to this commission's existence. So there's a plan, and it's been followed. You also said that you had a strategic plan based on the five-year plan that was planned also, not in this room, but by the state, and you were following that plan as well.
You didn't have to, you never had a choice.
Well, it's a good thing to have a plan like that, and this is all a rotational system. So what I'm finding out then is that we have not created any internal plans. We have followed plans that were precedents given to us or ideas presented by the state, but we haven't internally proposed our own plan, which is what needs to happen. We can't go on into the future just doing this where we, week by week, we hear about the next little project just because a gripe comes up. There are legitimate complaints, and there are illegitimate complaints. I get that. We're gonna hear about all of them. But I'm asking for us to be responsible as administrators and request a plan. And if they don't have the capability of doing that, then we need to reevaluate our situation. Why is, why is what I'm explaining to request as far as a plan, a procedural plan, why is that too much to ask?
Because they have a plan. I'm not gonna micromanage the importance. They know what needs done. They know where they're going next.
Why is that too much to ask, Aljo?
Well, you know, Bob sat there with his book, and he opened it up and told you what happened in nineteen ninety-nine, and you don't think he's organized. And you don't think he has a plan. I mean, nineteen ninety-nine, he can recall what was, what had been done by opening his book. It was in the back of his book. So I am, I am confident that he knows what needs to be done, and he's working as quickly as he can to solve these problems. So I guess I, that's my answer to you.
Okay, being able to go back in my notes and show you something that happened in the past is a completely different skill than formulating a plan for the future. It's a different type of skill. And I have not seen, if they, if they possess those skills in this department, I have not seen those be presented to the commission, which that's our job to oversee. Well, I can tell by your body language, and you're rolling your eyes and looking up into the ceiling, that you're not even in this conversation with me. So I'll continue on with my motion. I move to request a plan of action be presented to the commission from the highway department, detailing a priority list of current and future projects.
Do I have a second?
I have a second, but I can't, I can't vote, but I can, I can help out. I think they ought to have a plan.
They have the plan. They know where they're going. They know what projects need to be done.
Motion dies for lack of second. Do we have anything else for this commission today?
Yes, I have a few other concerns. I was informed that this year, we use the same auditing firm that I believe, Don, correct me if I'm misquoting you, but you said we've been using them as long as you've been here? The auditing firm?
That is incorrect. What I said is that we used a firm, and they have now merged with another firm, and we now use that firm.
So how, so this particular firm, it's newly formed after the merger, how long have we been using that firm?
Can't, can't tell you right off the bat.
More than three years, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so in the professional industry, they suggest that you change auditors pretty frequently, about every three years. And I'm not saying it has to stick to a three-year cycle. But I would say that we need to consider, just, I was at the North Central Regional Planning Commission that I reported to you back on, from last month, and they solicited auditors from, I think, five different bids they got. So there are firms out there that are available to do it. And they were just opening up the bid for this present year. I think they do that every year, which you obviously don't have to. You're retaining a professional service. But it is suggested that you do that three, you know, within a three-year time period is pretty much how it's been looked at. So I think we need to be a little more, I think we need to search a little more for some external input. Because from what I saw, if this is the same, is this the same guy that you worked with last year when he came in and did the meeting with us over the budget? Is that the same individual?
I believe it is.
Yeah, he's very tentative, and he only had specific recommendations based on previous years, and that kind of menta- And that kind of mentality in budgeting is what we see nationwide. I mean, we have $20 trillion worth of debt. So I, I think that it might be good to just encourage a little more cooperat-, um, progressive cooperation or competition for the, for the job. Because I think what I saw was someone who's very comfortable and has done this routinely. So you want someone who's going to be a little more proactive. And I think we just need to solicit for bids in general. So I move to solicit bids for auditing and budget preparation for the year 2018 from multiple firms.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of second.
So is there a reason that you're just comfortable with this firm and you're going to continue to do what you've done in the past?
Really do a number of counties right around this and they've done a good job as far as I'm concerned.
They've done a good job?
It's not their job to tell us what to put.
Well, that's not what I saw happening. I saw very much a pre-constructed budget that we approved.
We took the proposed budget and entered it into a sort of computer program.
And everything that we did this year with our budget was all based on last year with the notion that we were just going to increase by 1.4%. There was no real maneuvering of funds. It was all, you know, take from where there was and, you know-
How many days did we work on them? Three?
It was all based on the prior year though, which is what you've habitually done.
Sometimes it's good to have people that are familiar with your operation to continue doing that. And I guess that's where I come from, they know our county finances. And I think that they're honest people and I think they probably do us a good job. I don't know that you're going to accomplish anything by switching to another firm. And as Terry said, they do a large group of counties here in North Central Kansas. They, all the other counties seem satisfied too with them. So I, I don't, I don't understand why you suddenly think we need to change auditing firms.
I'm not questioning their integrity and it's not me suddenly thinking about changing auditing firms. That's, in the professional world that's out there somewhere, people do change auditing firms quite frequently. It's a standard practice. I'm not asking for something that's my own unique idea. This is just general knowledge for anyone that has any kind of professional capacity. So moving on then, we had previously asked for our human resources department to present us a potential resolution so that we can be looking at job descriptions. And we're now entering the last quarter of the year. So I think it would be appropriate to take that seriously. And you guys got copies of what, um, Deborah had provided for us. So I move to adopt the resolution prepared by Lincoln County Human Resources for annual job description review.
What's the resolution?
It's the one that she brought to us.
Where was it, when did she bring it?
Yeah, it was probably six weeks ago now.
I have a few drafts.
Oh, I don't think she emailed it, but I, I have it in my file folder, but I didn't-
I think she emailed it, I didn't run it off.
I don't think she emailed it.
I got the evaluations.
Same day, I think.
I don't have any resolution. Don, would you have her, see if she could give us one, please?
While we have a low in the moment, six years ago, I brought up the issue of using wind fund money to purchase equipment. It would save us interest. At that time, the amount of maintenance we were fixing to purchase was going to cost the county $11,000 and something in. I remember rejoicing with the county credit at that time. You will get that money back because you appropriate that money for the maintenance of the first place. Why not borrow your own money instead of paying the bank?
We are not borrowing any money.
Well, we've got money now from interest free to buy from. You appropriated different types of money. So you're still borrowing money.
We paid all the loans off a couple of years ago, except for the hospital bond issue.
But I think what he's saying is you're taxing to get that annual revenue to pay cash for the equipment, if that's what you're saying.
And you wouldn't have to because you've already got that money in the bank and it would still come up to you. Process. Terry, you said a long time ago when you ran the commission, we should run this as a business, tell me, didn't you?
Certain aspects, I don't think you can, you can't be the whole county.
One is better than them.
Most, most everything, if you were in and around that business, you would have already sold off parts of it by now.
And, and, uh, we're here, got out of here before I ask another question. I need a request a long time ago downstairs, had work done for my property, it has not been done. Why are we having so much controversy with this supervisor? We've had people come in here and make complaints, brought in photographs downstairs, Delver Walker was one of them. Now, I don't know because I've been gone for a couple of weeks. There was a possible litigation with this Steve Snyder issue. Is this what it takes to get things done, litigation? That's a costly one.
So if we're paying cash for two more years to buy four margaritas and we spent four, I can't remember what it was, four twenty?
Something like that.
I can't remember what it was right now.
I'm counting, I'm going to get out the two that we're selling.
I'm sorry?
That's what we get out of the two that we're selling.
Okay, so, so that takes up 2018, 2019. So for the year 2020 then, what would be the proposed use for that 400 and some thousand that will potentially still be taxing for that department? Am I interpreting the silence as a lack of ideas?
I think you just said that we were going to tax for that money. I wasn't aware that we were going to tax.
So in 2020, when you and I will still be in office, when we do the budget for 2020 in 2019, you're proposing that we won't need that extra 400 and some thousand?
We won't need it for road crews, probably. We will need some because we'll have to replace the two that rotate out.
This is what she presented for you guys to review.
Yes, thank you. And I did look over it and I, I would accept it. That motion would have died for a lack of second since we moved on. I would say under section five, annual review of job descriptions, that's what I consider to be extremely important. At a minimum, the department heads and elected officials will review job descriptions for their respective departments on an annual basis. Annual review of descriptions shall be conducted by December 31st of each year. And at a minimum, the board of county commissioners will review department head job descriptions on an annual basis. Annual review of descriptions shall be conducted by December 31st of each year. I think it's extremely important for a governing body of elected officials to hold themselves accountable. And so I'm not so much as concerned about putting certain restrictions down the line as far as what they're doing for these job descriptions. But I think the most important part is what I read at the end, number five, that we hold ourselves accountable. Because with the last discussion over how our EMS director was hired, that led to the knowledge that we hadn't updated job descriptions for that department head and others then for quite some time. So I think that's a problem. We should hold ourselves accountable to be doing that yearly. You got this before, didn't you, Terry? You read it, what, what was proposed? I think the rest of this is pretty precise. It just talks about, you know, the original file for the job description will be on file at the county clerk's office and a copy will be given to the department head or elected official and to the employee. Um, once a position is vacated, the job description is what is used to determine the minimum qualifications for employees. I think that's all pretty standard and basic. And then it says that the changes to be made to the job description will go through human resources department, which makes sense. So I don't know what number resolution we're on for the year, but this would be 2017 something.
Not to get the car before the horse, but I really think that this needs to go to the attorneys prior to, so if there's modifications you need to make, like I don't like the first wording of the top because it doesn't follow any other formal, uh, resolution that we've ever done.
Okay.
So I'd prefer that the attorneys review it just to see and make sure. We don't write resolutions.
Well, you know-
And I've tried to explain that to Deborah several times, we don't write resolutions.
That's not her fault, I asked her to do it. And they, and they supported her doing it, which is a move in the right direction. I mean, we've got to get something done, I don't care if it doesn't come from me. I already brought a resol-, a resolution pertaining to this. So if it has to come from an outside source, that's perfectly acceptable and I understand what you're saying. So I will change my motion, the last one died. Um, I move to request county attorney approval, review and approval.
Maybe they need to, do, do they need to develop it? Don, are you saying they need to write it in legal terms?
Well, I think that if we, I mean, they may, they may have to change some of the language.
Review, comma, change and approval of Lincoln County Job Description Policy Resolution.
Do you want to read that back, Don?
Alexis, move to request county attorney review, comma, change and approval, Lincoln County Job Description Policy Resolution.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Discussion. Do we have a resolution like this on Don, do we have one when we get the original job descriptions?
Good question, I'm not sure.
I didn't see one, but I only went back to 2010. So if we do, it's prior to that.
If we do, we need to make sure this resolution disregards or invalidates one prior to. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Is there anything else for this board of county commissioners?
No, thank you, that's all I have for today.
Don, do you have anything, of course?
I don't believe I do, okay.
Okay, um, the bids will be opened on the 27th. We need to decide if the commission is going to be here. If it is, we will need to call a special meeting. Otherwise, we'll be meeting on the 30th of September as well as the 25th, fourth, fifth, 25th.
Wait, the 30th is Saturday.
Well, 29th then.
So we can or cannot do the end of the month meeting on the 27th while they're here?
Now, that's, it could be problematic because the payroll isn't due until that day, so I think we probably-
Time periods go through the 25th, so technically we don't have the time person, 26th, 6th. It has to be to the bank by the noon on the 27th and then AP still has to be finished. So if it was to be done, it would have to be done after the special meeting.
It'd be late.
What time are they doing the bids? Did we set, did he set a time?
He set a tentative time of 1:00 P.M.
So then that might work, right?
It's a potential, I, I don't know.
But it have, if it has to be at the bank by noon on that same day and we're not-
Payroll has to be, but we still have to finish up accounts payable.
Accounts payable.
So I guess, question is, do you want me to call a special meeting for the 27th?
Well, if we're going to go, we're going to have to.
Right, because we have to give notice if we're all, if two or more will be present.
Yeah, I'll call a special board meeting on the 27th at 1 o'clock, is that right?
Yes, most put one and I'll check with Eric and make sure that's what we put and then I'll-
Yeah, if you would, you can change some.
I'll change it, okay.
Here? Or do we do Lincoln Park now?
Oh, at the nursing home.
Yeah.
Commission stands adjourned.
Are you going to shut your camera down?
Yes.